I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. God, thank you for all the many blessings that are represented in this room. God, we just thank you for how merciful you are towards us. And God, I just pray tonight as we do business for the school district, God, that you give us wisdom and help us to make decisions that will just help the school district. And God, just honor you. And God, I pray that you would be with the teachers and administration as they begin to prepare for this next school year. God, I pray that it would be the greatest school year that Huntsville School District's ever had. And God, I pray for all those who have come on to the staff recently. God, I pray that you would just bless them as they get settled in. God, give them the direction that they need to lead in the capacity that they've been asked to lead in. And God, I just pray and thank you for your son Jesus and what he did for us on the cross. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Welcome, everybody, especially our new students. Glad to have you guys here. We are going to call the July 10th, 2023 Huntsville Board of Education meeting to order. We do have a forum. We want to welcome everyone, employees and guests. Mr. Warren, please go ahead.
Okay, we do have a pretty big agenda for this evening. I would start off with the consent agenda. If I can get a motion to approve that, I appreciate it.
Don't make a motion.
A motion, maybe a second? All for favor?
Sorry. Going to special reports. So as Act 425 of 2023 required that we do a not necessarily presentation but report about student academics at every regularly scheduled working. This month, we are looking at our math scores. And this is basically cohort trend over time. You will see that it's broken up by Huntsville campuses and St. Paul campuses. It has math and reading scores. And what I would get you to do is to place your finger on the third grade on the far left-hand side for the math map. And as you will go across, this is cohort data. So as you go across from fall of 1920 to fall of 2021, in the next column, we'll see that that's when they are fourth graders. So it moves up as, the chart moves up as it goes along. For us, this points out information regarding, A, how a cohort is doing over time. But it also points out, you know, where some deficiencies may be. It does show for the most part that over the fall, winter and spring testing cycle, that each grade level, each core group does grow from one academic, or from one testing score to another during the year as a group, as a cohort. Now, this is not individuals, as you can tell. But this is, this is the type of data that we will be presenting, you know, during this session. Next month, hopefully, we will have our ACT-inspired data to be able to report out to you all as well. Anyway.
Have we identified any areas that we are going to focus on at this point and where we could do there?
We talked about, and principals jump in, at our, at our May meeting, we talked about the growth that we saw over the year and it led to some discussion. We did talk about also just testing tips in general. There is, there is an aspect of this that is especially at the younger ages, just getting acclimated to learning how to take the task. That shouldn't be the entire aspect of it, but that is part of it. Go ahead and jump in, though.
I have to add to what he was saying. One thing that we noticed was a significant increase in our kindergarten test scores from the previous years since we've done computer-based testing. And Bailey worked on getting us touchscreen Chromebooks. And we can't help but guess that that had a significant impact on how well they did because the drag-and-drop feature is so difficult for those with limited-five-motor skills. And he is installing that, say, our touchscreen Chromebooks in our first grade. And so we're not going to say that that's going to fix our problems, but we're anxious to at least take away any barriers that are there so that we get the real data that we really need.
Is it like Chromebooks are hard for adults to use much?
Yeah.
They are. And one thing I noticed watching a kid take a test was kid draw, you know, it's like you've got a picture, you're taking it to the line, and if they don't get that lined up just right on that line, it pops back up. Well, most of our students at that age, their experience in technology is on their phone, their parents' phone, and they're dragging it. And that, that bouncing back tells that kid they've got the answer wrong. So they'll automatically go choose something else instead of realizing they didn't have it lined up. So it's just a hope of ours that that hasn't impacted, that we get truer data, I guess, that way. But we're not saying that that's why we weren't where we wanted to be always.
Oh, no, but all those things add up a little bit in time. Is there anything else that you see that you're needing, like good help?
As far as resources, no, not that I...
Mr. Dumbarton?
Same. I think time will tell. Like Jennifer said, we saw that increase in kindergarten as well. And Ms. McMillan, our kindergarten teacher, really, you know, appreciated how that helped those kids. And so she was talking to Jen, our first-grade teacher, so we purchased them for first grade. And hopefully, next year, you know, if that plays a part in that as well. So we'll see. I think time will tell.
What we discussed for the most part in our conversation for this year is that we saw growth. I mean, you know, you can't use that general term, but for the most part, we saw growth at every grade level from the fall to the spring. And that's what we're looking for. You know, there are always, the bell curve is something that does exist. You can't get rid of it for some reason. And there's always going to be a few kids here and there that may not grow or may take a dip. And that can be for multiple reasons, multiple facets of reasons. Academics plays a little part in that. And we try to eliminate all the other factors so that we can pinpoint if it is academics. And that's kind of where we started at. So going on to the superintendent report in section four, all we have this month is our financial report. We don't do these enrollment reports here in the month of July and August. You will see that we ended the, well, I say that, June actuals ended up from July actual beginning balance. So we ended the month at $1,681,988.32. We do have this period 13, which is kind of a reconciliation period where, you know, Tina loves it. She just loves spending all of her time doing things. But, you know, if there were corrections that had to be made as far as funds were taken out of this code instead of that code, or, you know, or just reconciliation in general, it would happen during the month of July in this period 13. But we increased our balance by $1.1 million over the fiscal year, which is what, what we wanted to do. And these are, that is, this is our, trying to make sure I say it right. This is our restricted funds in funds one, two, and taking into account one, two and four. So we have, remember those eight funds that money goes into and comes out of. These are the restricted sources of funds. It's not necessarily our imbalance. Our imbalance will actually be a little bit better than this. So anyway, that's where we stand fiscal.
Our goal was a doing, right?
No, our goal was an increase of $100,000 from the end-of-year balance. Yes. So that's, but, so, yes. We hit, we hit weatherway, but, yes. I'm going more into it whenever we go into our action item, the last action item a little bit, to explain what we're doing in that as well. But we're very pleased with where we ended up. And I'm going to say this now. Very pleased with where we ended up. And I can honestly say no purchase order was turned down. Like, anything that was requested was approved. So that makes, that, that makes it even better for my standpoint. Okay. Administration reports. We'll start off with our new...
I study director.
Boy, under the bus.
Reset that.
Mr. Junior? Thank you. First of all, thank you, guys. It's been, it's been an honor to get up here and get to work. And things have been going well. We've been, this past month or so has been a whirlwind. I started officially on contract this past Monday on the third. But I was up here probably 10 or 11 days, I think, during June, just getting things done and meeting people. And did a few interviews as well where we could hire some coaches that we needed to replace. I just want to say, I don't have a huge report to give you because we, I'm just getting started. But I want to say that I've been tremendously impressed by our coaches that we have, how hard they're working in the summer and the things they're wanting to do with our athletes, the plans that they have. I think we've got a really good, great group of coaches here. The town has been very supportive. I told somebody the other day, we haven't played a football game and we haven't lost yet, so everybody likes us still. Been in it long enough to know how that works. But the town has been great. And, you know, our, our football guys were up at seven this morning. The head football coach, Coach Henderson, told me this morning, I pulled into the parking lot at six and there was already volleyball girls in the parking lot. And I'm like, yeah, they start at 6:30. And so we, we have kids up here working out and practicing all day long. And they're, they're working hard to improve themselves. And so I'm really excited about that. Matter of fact, the football guys, the, the skill guys are going right now to Lincoln at a seven-on-seven. And then our junior high cranked back up today. Our seventh grade will start up tomorrow for football. So about tomorrow afternoon, every student that's wanting to play football at this point have gone through a workout. And I think that's really good and, and some things that we're wanting to build. We've got some ideas on how we're wanting to improve things from where they are. And we are looking at different things we can do and know some things are further down the line than the others. But it's, it's been a great start. And I just want to thank you guys for the support that you give our athletes and our coaches and letting them work and do what they have. And our administrators for taking care of them as well. I, I don't know if it could have started any better than what it has. So I thank you guys for that, so.
All right. On the tech side, we've been busy. You know, summer is our months where a lot of people just say, oh, I bet you're enjoying the summer. No, my guys will tell you they're not. Summer is, that's when we can get in there and we can do a lot of our projects and stuff that we just can't do when students and staff are around. So summer is actually our busiest month. So we look forward to school starting because it slows down to some, to some degree. But the guys this week, they've been hard at it. We have two, we're lucky enough that we have two student workers with us this summer that's been helping. I think we will be done cleaning and inventorying and repairing over 3,000 Chromebooks by the end of this week. So that, that has been a big part of what they've been doing. I mean, they, we do a lot of our preventative maintenance stuff, blowing out our switches, doing repairs and that kind of stuff during the summer. As Ms. Rutchin mentioned, we installed 200 touchscreen Chromebooks for first grade. We have another 175 ordered for second grade. But I, I don't know if they'll get them before school, but they'll be here for them. On the, on the safety and security side of things, Blaine's been a great help right off the bat with our, we're doing some security upgrades at our primary school just to help make that space and facility a little bit more secure, safety-friendly. So that, you'll see a lot of changes in there over the next couple of months, so.
Well, like Coach Preston, this is my fourth official day. So I was fortunate enough to be able to come in and work a few days during June. But mainly, it's kind of like Coach Preston. It was get to know people, learn the position. A lot more computer stuff than what I'd imagined that has to be done. So I'm learning that and getting, getting on top of that. But basically, Bailey and Michael had a game plan laid out for the summer. And I've been real fortunate that they got a good start on that and I'm able to kind of ride their coattails on that. They're wrapping up with the waxing and stuff at the high school this week. The other campuses are not far behind. St. Paul, been down there a couple of times now. The bathroom is, we're waiting on the inspector to come in to inspect the top-out plumbing on it. And then Jeff Patrick has made an order to, for all of his trail material to finish that up. So he should have it wrapped up here, I'd say within a couple of weeks, be completely done on it. The St. Paul Middle School had worked and got a donation on a kiln. This has turned out to be a little bigger project than what, than what I really thought it was going to be whenever I got in and looked at it. I've got an electrician coming down to take a look at that to figure out what we need to do on it. We may have to do some upgrading on our lathe again. To touch on what primary, on what Bailey said about the primary, we are adding offices for Ms. Rich. And I'm sorry, we had to shrink your office down a little bit to meet the fire code with it and stuff. So we've got that going in that direction. I've got quotes coming in on that for getting some red sealing that I'm just waiting on before we move forward a bit. So hopefully, in the next day or two, we'll get, get moving forward on that. Today, my goal has been getting around, talking to people and getting prioritized summer projects. We got some painting done today. I met with Ms. McCollum. We're planning on doing some painting next week on some of her stuff up there. So I'm trying to just look and see how much time we got to get into the summer projects. And another one of Bailey's things here was the grant for changing all the locks in the buildings. So we're finally getting to move forward with that. We got that, the order process started on it today. We're going to have a meeting trying to figure out how we make these locks. Because there are several ways that we can do it. So we're going to have some meetings, get with the principals later on, figure out how we want to, how we want all these locks to work. So basically, instead of me carrying around 10 pounds of keys, I have one key that'll open everything. So that'll be really nice.
We need to make sure they don't get passed out, too.
Well, the good thing is we're the only ones that can make them. So once we get them, the maintenance department is the only people that can make these keys. So you can't take it to the hardware store anywhere that will make it. So it's a proprietary...
Proprietary.
Proprietary system. And so it's, it's going to be good for us, good for us. But yeah, you're right. If we lose a master key or a grandmaster key, that's going to be a bad day. Because now we've got to rekey all the, all the locks and then fill all the keys. So, but that's something that we're going to be working on the next few days, trying to figure out how we want to do it. And the last thing I've got is JW Bohannon finished up the, the middle school on heat there. So we're on the devil's side of that. We're just about done with all of our HVAC changeouts. That's all I got to do. Thank you. Bruce?
Nobody's as happy as Mr. Toder's on getting rid of keys. That's about half. That weighs me down quite a bit. Just kind of what he said. I want to brag on our custodial team down there, and he and I was talking about it earlier. They do an outstanding job. They'll probably finish by the end of next week with the waxing of the doors. We've been held back on shampooing of the carpets. That's what's kind of pushed us back. And so I think they're supposed to be there tomorrow. And if that happens, then we'll get moving on that again. Bathroom's coming along good. Again, any type of construction stuff, you got delays. We ran into them. Jeff ordered a door and it's two weeks out. So that's a two-week process and that. You know, staff, professional development throughout the summer. They're getting things done that they need to get done. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, you know, we have a young lady at FCCLA Nationals that just got back, Maddie Watson, and she placed top 10 in her presentation at Nationals. Top 10%, top 10.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we're very excited for her. And I want to brag on Ms. Maloney, teacher. She put in a lot of time and effort outside of the class. You know, there was lots of nights her up there at nine and 10 o'clock working on the presentation and just things like that. So really proud of them.
Okay. To piggyback off of that, high school had some silver medalists at FCCLA. Juliet Castillo and Alyssa Brown, silver medals at the FCCLA National Convention. And I'm bragging on those, the two sponsors for that, Betty Jo Smith and Katie Greg, because they also put in a lot of time and hours of fundraising for that. So we're really proud of them. The floors at the high school was beautiful. The cafeteria doesn't have all the brown spots anymore. It's snowy white. And I'm scared to death to let a kid come in there now. So you may all just have to walk around barefoot. I'm just, they look so good. Also, with that said, I want to say thank you to Liz and Bailey and Matt Ferguson and Coach Henderson and I and kids. We've been moving furniture everywhere. That's not an easy job. So we went home exhausted. We're not built for that, but we've been doing it because we, we do what we need to do. So I put that in. If you haven't driven by the high school, up on the driveway, you need to do so because we've been doing landscaping. I took what you said to heart, to make the schools look better. And we've been turning up shrubbery and all kinds of stuff. Next is the power washing. I've got the power washer sitting there. I want to, I want to use that somewhere. So anyway, it looks really pretty. I've had a lot of good positive feedback about it. And it's just, that was a lot of hard work, too. So every kid that helped do that, I fed them pizza, so that's always a plus. But every one of them were involved in a AAA activity of some sort. They were in football or basketball or band or FCCLA. So that does say something about what those activities and those clubs do for kids. They help promote giving back. So anyway, and I told, I told the kids, I said, we can't, if we're not taking care of what we have, how can they trust us if we aren't? So they, they get it. So I'm really proud of those kids that did help. We had about 10 do landscaping that day. And then many, many of them have helped with furniture.
Yeah, they're showing up to help us move furniture and that's really... And they seem to be enjoying it, so.
Yeah. Only they get to see us in a different light. We're wearing, I told them, I said, no pictures. Get a head shorts on. I said, no pictures, no social media posts. I mean, look at them.
Um, yeah, just what Ms. Enix said, a lot of manual labor during the summer. So maybe to ask, I'm not really big, so it takes...
And I may or may not have busted my foot in a maybe video.
And I may or may not have taken the video off the camera and sent her home.
We're going to make a video of what we do during the summer, so.
A graduation video.
It would, yeah.
Play it in reverse if you can.
I do have that.
Watch it a lot. Actually, I have a bruise on. I've had a bruise on a little while, so.
Go ahead, yeah. Once again, girl. I'm staring at them. I started last Monday also. I'm the assistant principal of the intermediate and the middle school. And, and so neither of my cohorts are here. But started out actually before, week before last at the Thrive Conference down in Morelton. Extremely powerful conference, talking about setting expectations and getting staff and kids on board with, you know, behaviors and, and habits and the kinds of things that we are hoping to sort of instill in our kiddos from the get-go. And so a lot of that work will be ongoing over the course of not just this year, but coming years. Biggest piece of that will start with behavior matrices and things like that. Trying to work towards more of a positive behavior sort of programming for the kids. Did that with Jennifer and with Matt, and that was really, really powerful for me. And then also, you know, just sort of trying to work on some startup ideas for back-to-school. Was able to work a little bit with Kayla last week. We've got some interviews set up to fill a couple of positions in her school tomorrow. And then we got a few interviews actually set up for the middle school also this week. So trying to move forward as, as best I can with, with what, where I'm at. And also, I was notified that we had two girls also take silver medal at the FCCLA National Conference. Mackenzie Smith and Lily Day. So I'll shop that out, too.
Just crazy busy. Oh, this is the, this office here, this is the time of year where, oh my gosh, it's, you're just trying to keep your sanity in check.
Turning mics again?
Please, please.
I don't think she would find that funny. I think she would.
I have to, on the older I get...
Brought up again. She's actually said that to me.
I like I do, the look I do, Scott.
Yes, sir.
She had to know that I was joking.
It filters first. Is he joking or not?
When I figure it out, the older I get, the, the less I like change. So anyway. It, it is crazy busy. We've got girls in here working right now, just putting in the hours just to get things done because we've got deadlines we have to meet and close the year out. So, so if you want, we're just dropping.
Well, two years later, we have swings now. I hope you've seen the swing. They are nice. It's been a slow process. But we, actually, we got a little discount. We had some money left over. So now we're buying some shade for each camp, for each of those two campuses. And so everything is just such a big deal, but we're working on it. It's coming, hopefully, before school gets started. I am going to be meeting with the coaches and the athletic department tomorrow to talk about some PD with them about all that fun stuff that everybody loves to see me coming, bullying, harassment, Title IX and all the stuff they love. But we're going to get everything done and ordered and everybody be aware of what's going on from the get-go. Jennifer and I went to, where'd we go? We went to Benton and Special Ed, POGs. And we heard a speaker named Dan Springer. He has a book called Happy Kids, Don't Punch You in the Face. He was excellent. It was an all-day training. And he was very, very good. He's got lots of experience, all the way from bus driver to whatever doctorate he has. But he was very good. And what we came home with was a lot of free PD. And the one I'm really excited about was all about, it's for bus drivers, about behaviors on the bus and what to do, what happens when this happens, how to handle that. And I've been working with Harry about that. We've never had any kind of thing to offer the bus drivers because the best, they're not teachers that are used to doing the behavior and they shouldn't have. because the best, they're not teachers that are used to doing the behavior, and they shouldn't have to, but they do. We know they do, so I'm pretty excited about that. But there was a lot of training that came back from that that we were able to utilize this year, so that's pretty exciting. Of course, I'm still looking for a couple of teachers, if you know somebody, hanging around, just waiting for the last minute. I got a spot for them.
The lucky part about being last is they've covered everything. So, we have had our teachers coming on-site. We had kindergarten on-site today doing some curriculum work on the new standards that came out. And Bruce's group were up to, second grade was here last week, and the first grade will be up next week. But other than that, they've covered everything.
I have a question.
Sure.
About one of the master schedules. Is this appropriate time to ask? Okay, high school. On the physical science, I see that you have like 160 kids for ninth grade, and one teacher assigned to that many kids.
There's not 160 kids. You're like 140 or something.
Oh, okay. Because that room, unless you make a room change, because it counts more than 24 kids.
Right, yes.
Safely.
Right, and that's all we, that's all we've accounted for is 24, 12, let's say, something like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we may have to adjust that a little bit.
It's 13 minutes, like.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't love it. That was, I'm trying to think who was helping me that day. It was Harry. Harry was there that day, but we were fitting him. I only loved Bailey. Bailey was there. So, yeah, we remembered.
Okay, good, because, yeah. It was a fun year when we all left our step in the hall for the golf trip over, because you couldn't breathe in the room, and so.
Thank you all. I have to, I'm, yeah, I hate... Well, I don't hate, as far as, people have done, gone extra, done extra stuff this summer, gone the extra mile. You have people like Mr. Preston and Blaine who have come in and worked whenever they didn't have to, before they even got on contract, before they were even officially hired, some of it. You know, we had ladies here until 2:00 in the morning getting payroll and accounts payable done. I mean, people have gone above and beyond in general, and that's just across the board. So, I hate that, when I say I hate saying it, because I'm gonna leave somebody out specifically when I start naming names, and I'm not gonna start naming names, but you just need to know that summertime is not downtime, first of all. And it's, they have done more than what has been asked of them in most cases, so I'm just leaving it at that. Going on to new business, the election of officers. You see in the board packet, we basically have three options. You can basically reelect the officers as you have, and now you can rotate, or you can elect all new. The recommendation from superintendent is to keep at least for one more year the same people in place. Everybody was brand-new, and you might just be learning this role. It helps out with the second action item, which is the distribution officer, dispersing officer. It doesn't cause a change. There's no signature requirements from that. Tina is pleading her case.
We don't have to change the diplomas either.
But I, you know, it is up to you all. The recommendation is to stay the same, but it is completely up to the will of the board to do what you want to do.
Well, I would have made a motion in that regard, because I think, because we've only been here a year, and I don't think anybody's doing it, I think everybody's doing a good job. But my question is, is that usually normal for administration to make a recommendation to how we organize ourselves?
I have seen it before. I don't, normal, I don't know. I can't say that I have seen, well, excuse me. I don't know if that's normal. I wouldn't say that. I have seen recommendations from administration on what you can do and what would be recommended by the superintendent.
Well, I will make a recommendation that we keep the officers the same if they will accept those positions.
And I will say.
All in favor?
Second, tab B, is designation of distribution officers, dispersing officers. Typically, this is the board president and vice president, as it was last year. We recommend to keep it as the same from this office. If that's okay, entertain that motion.
First by Nick, second by Bobby. All in favor?
Section C, superintendent as ex officio financial secretary. This is annual designation. We did it last year. We did it later last year, because I didn't realize that we had to do it, but we did do it. Just helps, it just allows me to conduct business as a financial, conduct financial business.
Josh, all in favor?
Okay, section D. Handbook changes. The handbook changes for the student handbooks have been gone through committee comprised of stakeholders, teachers, and administrators. They review it each year. They make recommendations based off of state regulations, policies. What you have in front of you are the recommended policy changes.
I'm so excited about the policy change.
I am prayerful that we are able to...
I really hope it goes well and not be, but of course, sitting down there at 2:00 in the afternoon while kids are outside playing.
One, sometimes 12:30, and that's not even a joke. And it's just...
It's not safe.
You can't get in the parking lot.
My question is, who has that much time?
At least five.
That was neat, but yeah, I'm so...
I hope that that's worded sufficiently.
So, are we gonna have resource officers enforce that, or are we gonna have administration enforce that? Down there telling people, "Lee, what are we gonna do about that?"
Yes. So, we have talked with, we had already, or excuse me, I had talked, and Bailey, I can say, was in that conversation. I can't say that the building principals were in that conversation, but we talked with Chief Thomas about how, because they also suggested this as well, for emergency purposes, and fire, or fire chief as well. And, you know, they said, "Yes, we'll help enforce it." So, it'll be, it'll just be a teamwork effort on all of our parts to say, you know, "You can't, you can't stay here. We've got to keep this area clean and cleared out." And then, at this time, you know, 2:45 is when you can...
Well, I mean, we need to enforce that more than just the first two or three years of school.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
It needs to be continuously, because these people around here seem to have a real short memory on stuff like that.
We've already discussed purchasing signage and advertising it well in advance.
I hope, I do hope that works.
I feel like in the whole...
You've been around here a long enough about what I'm talking about.
Well, Chief Thomas, he agreed, I mean, he, that was key to it. You know, if we do this, are they gonna be willing to enforce it? And they agreed that, yes, they would, they would help us enforce it.
They, they didn't just agree to it, they kind of brought it up.
Yes.
The rules are worthless if you don't enforce them right.
Well, and I'd like to see that here, limiting access to electronic devices.
Yes.
Because they're so distracting.
They need to talk to each other face-to-face, yes.
They're forgetting how to do that of this society.
I can have a question about high school, where Spanish has been taken off, did I read that right?
Yes.
For requirement. So, for those kids, when we didn't even have a Spanish teacher, and they were stuck taking online, and they were doing it for the sheer fact they wanted to graduate with high honors or valedictorian. If that were the thing that keeps them from being able to do that, are we going to make some...
It's in there, but it's not, it's an either-or. It's not a, you have to have. They can use that in replace...
But what I'm saying is, let's say I got a B in it, because I was having, because there was two versions. They said one was really hard, one was easier, and so, I'm taking that, and I got a B, and that's the only B I have. And I was, only took the class because I thought I, I was trying to be valedictorian, and that's gonna keep me from it. Are we going to punish that student since we're not even requiring it anymore?
Well, I hadn't even thought about that, honestly, but that's something that we...
Retroactively, is that what you mean? Yes.
Yeah, well, we did last year, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that it wouldn't count on their GPA if it's gonna hurt them.
We did it last year.
Okay, then I'm good with that. So, now if they take it, it's on them.
Exactly.
Well, we've got a teacher now too.
And we do have a teacher.
And do we have a vaping cessation program?
We do, and that's Judge Zimmerman's baby. So, we're gonna implement that. We had a little bit of it starting in January of this year, but she was just heavily for that, so we're going off of her lead because we've actually had dinner with her, and Liz and I have Nikki Rowland.
We're talking about some other options with Judge Zimmerman that we can work with the kids for vaping as well.
So, do you not have, have you all got videos where you can see everything but in the bathroom? I mean, is that some of the impression I've got?
Correct.
So, like, if we catch one of the kids vaping on video, does somebody watch him? I worked the security, Jimmy Hunt. He watched video cameras all day long.
We don't, if we did a report, we go pull the camera footage.
So, he does record, so you can look at it and get across the timeframe or something.
Three weeks is what the, it lasts for three weeks.
That's good.
And if we download it when we have, you know, they don't usually do it in the hallway, but we kind of look to see you come down the bathroom and...
I've heard middle school had a bathroom.
And we have videos in the classroom. We have had some in the classroom, stick them down their slate and do it, you know.
Oh, I drove a school bus here to preach to the bar on who sneaks a vape.
The buses on the, the bus cameras are really good too, yeah.
I did happen to have one that worked back when that was happening, the old ones, but I seen it with my own eyes, and it was amazing.
It's, it's, it's a work in progress.
The only places we don't have cameras are the bathrooms, the counselor's office, and the principal's offices, because it's...
I understand that, I mean, that's law.
Do we still have a vape detector in the bathroom?
We do, but it's not, it's not reliable. We do have some new vape detectors.
We have quite a few false positives.
Yeah.
Even them cleaning the halls in the evening will set them off.
I get, I get notifications at midnight when they're vaping.
We did purchase, I'd say, a higher quality of vape detectors for Kada, which is, that's that same camera system that we tried at prekey that we are hoping to kind of move everything to. And so, that is on our project list this summer to install. I think we have six for up there.
We do.
One for every bathroom.
Are any going into the middle school?
No, you guys have tried vape detectors up there already.
Have we thought about doing any, like, outreach for parents on the vaping issue?
They, well, yes, but there are sometimes, they condone it. Not all.
This is an issue across the school.
Oh, I know, it is, it is everywhere.
Across the nation.
It's just like anything else. If you don't make the punishment fit, to where they don't want to do it again, you're wasting your time talking about it. You've got, that's what's wrong with the prison system, that's what's wrong with everything. They don't, there's, nobody's afraid of the consequences. You've got to make them not want to have to face them consequences to get them to quit. I mean, that's, that's, that's all we can do. And how can you do that, I mean legally with the school? I mean, you guys know that, I don't, you know.
Well, we do as legal, we do as much as we can legally.
Right.
You know, we, again, you know, when you don't have the support sometimes.
Absolutely.
You know, it's hard to, sitting through that cessation thing for hours, that might be a deterrent, because they probably don't want to be out on their own time.
If Ms. Zimmerman is running it, I've been with her in court when I was a deputy. And if she hasn't changed, she will make an effect on the ones that's gonna learn anything.
Well, and it's hard in your situation, because if you kick the kid out because of it, then it's sometimes a reward. They're not here, they're not getting educated, then it goes back on us still.
Yes.
Your kid's not getting educated, plus then we're still held accountable for his course. It's like a hard thing.
And if they drop out, then you're deemed there.
And then, yeah, it's really hard.
And a lot of times, they do want you to put them, if we know they want it to be on access, we give them more access because that's what they want. So, we try to, we try to fill them out and read them before we give them, give them that. And we did do a clause in there where we can do half and half on some things, because truly, some schools are the best place for nine, 10 of these kids, so.
Right.
We need them there with us. Because we know they're being watched over, and schools, hopefully.
If there's no further questions regarding the changes, can we get a motion to approve?
Make a motion, I'll say.
Second, all in favor?
Okay, E is approval of renewal of property and vehicle insurance. There's nothing else to say other than that it jumped up quite a bit, about 170% from the previous year. The property, or that was the property, the vehicle insurance went down $2,000, so. You got a little bonus there, but it didn't offset it at all. We did check in, you know, there are two main ones. There's the State of Arkansas, there's ASBA. ASBA's dealing with the same thing. They're having all sorts of struggles with their jump in property insurance. I included in the packet the email that we got from the representative about what has caused this. And you can, you know, you can see what he writes about it. Just in general, the deductible went up as well. It's just, it's a bad situation all the way around as far as insurance goes for our property insurance. Even in the, even looking outside those two entities, the things that we could be provided with, it was not going to be any better. So, at that stage, I would make the recommendation that we approve the purchasing of insurance through the insurance division, risk management. As presented.
Can I make a motion that we approve that?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Going on to tab F is approval of the current internet safety and electronic device policy. This is same, it's an annual thing that we have to do. We have to show it in our, as kind of its own approval for rate funding and for rate purposes. So, that's why it's an action item aside from policies in general from last month. And so, I will take a motion to approve that.
I have a question.
Where's?
We are now, you know, it used to be that it was just older kids that had the access to the computers and all of that. And it's not, I feel like Bailey does great at making sure with the guardians that we have over ours, so they, not like when we first got them, and they, yeah, that was a nightmare. But now, we've got that all under control. But for little kids who are on there, and now they're learning here at school and may go home, are we maybe at that lower elementary level going to do some sort of education? Because their parents may not even, you know, think about it, or their parents are working hard and don't have time to supervise, some sort of education to keep them from like predator status, you know, like...
Like all the Roblox and those games.
Yes, that maybe we could help with that.
That may be something really good to do at parent involvement when we have our followers, you know.
Just because it's a kid's game doesn't mean adults aren't on there.
No, that's true, and I mean, that's where a lot of them target, so absolutely.
So, that those little kids understand that. Because, you know, we used to have stranger danger.
Right.
And everybody knew, "Oh, stranger danger," or the guys in the white vans pull up, "Ooh, it's the white van guys." They just go, "It's our tech guy."
And so we offer no candy.
But you know, there was that big program and I think maybe we could have some sort of program like that now for this.
And there's, I mean, there's resources out there we could utilize for that.
But I think you're right, like that parent information about things that you think are just kid games, like you mentioned Roblox. I remember my daughter playing that in elementary school and, you know.
Believe in Minecraft and that's a big one to deal with, like this.
Well, and maybe a parent, at the parent open house, whatever, the parent, what did you call it? The parent.
Well, we have a parent involvement.
Parent involvement, there you go. Maybe they could be given information on how to lock their computers. They may not even know how to block certain things on their computer. That's a good idea. Could help them with it. I make a motion that we accept the policy we always do.
Second, Steve, all in favor?
Okay. Item H is, excuse me, sorry. G, let me learn my alphabet. Is the internet content filters. Once again, this is the same protocol as far as it's annual thing that we have to do for fee rate and compliance. Uh, it has to be shown as its own action item. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to do that.
So what we just did?
No.
It's different. This is the thing that keeps here at school like when we first got it, they were doing form and.
The first was the internet safety agreement, basically what they're agreeing to when they use a computer. The second piece is our content filter, what we're doing.
You know how tech's every eye.
This piece is just what we're doing to actively control content that the kids.
Okay. Now to H, approval to enter into contract with City of Huntsville for school resource officers. As, as you know, from the county, uh, had to do the lack of, um, lack of personnel, had to drop the school resource officer. The city is going to be able to, uh, and actually they are approving it tonight at their council meeting. They just did. I was, I hadn't, hadn't got the text message yet, but.
Shannon?
Uh, we have been talking with them extensively about, about getting city police officers as SROs. They're gonna help facilitate it. As we can now go ahead and say that they are going to do so. Uh, I would entertain a motion that we.
I have a question before we go too far.
Yes, sir.
Now, this costs the school and the city, right? We pay half the salary like we did.
We pay seventy-five percent.
Okay, did we look at private to see the cost difference?
I did not do a cost analysis of a private, uh, entity. I did, our goal whenever we got together, when I say we, I mean Matt and, uh, and Bailey and just people involved in the safety and security of the program, our thought process was we want SROs first. That's been our goal from the beginning. And then we would go to the other entities if those were not available. So that's, that's kind of where, where we, we wanted to secure this avenue first. And then as we can, we would look at, you know, what, what is, what is the cost of adding C, you know, C S S O people in our district, uh, through our staff, through our, uh, personnel. Specifically at, at St. Paul, honestly, we, we look at that. The city, there's MOUs that have to be done because it's a city person instead of a county person, uh, which is not difficult. It's gonna make it very.
Or you're gonna be willing to swear them in.
That's, that's correct. But, uh, you know, just like the problem that it was with the county, they're mainly up here. They're not always on the St. Paul campus. So we are trying to figure out, you know, how do we incorporate, uh, C S S O into that? Potentially for specifically at St. Paul campus to start off.
The gentleman that sent you an email, Mr. Kale, runs a fine, highly trained, well-organized security group.
We've gotten, we've gotten interest from not just him, but others as well, and recommendations from others. So it's not something that's not.
I have worked with his group before when I was a cop and they are very, very well-trained, very well-disciplined and
Right.
would not be a bad person to have on your side if it goes that direction, for sure.
That's correct. We, we just, we went in order of trying to get.
That's what I needed in the.
Yes.
Uh, on the St. Paul, one is gonna be the one that can stay there while school's in session and not leave on call.
The, as far as the.
Our officer.
Yes, uh, because you know, the county was, they, they did a lot of, you know, pulling to cover for calls that needed to go out. The city has, they, you know, I don't know that I can say they guarantee, but their commitment is to putting the person as an SRO and that's all they do. They just stay in SRO.
We're just too far out to have them be cool.
Right.
I mean, we had what I think is a great one over there, but she was always being cool.
Now, the commitment has been.
And it's a very uneasy failing when there's not one around.
Correct. The commitment from the city has been the SRO is the SRO and not, would not be pulled to do something else.
I mean, that would be, being from the city, it would be more legitimate that way because even though they are sworn in the county, they're hired for this particular job. The only reason they need to be sworn in on the county's case, they have to do something within the law or make an arrest or enforce the law down there, or that's the reason for that being, you know, so. You're, they're on the right track on that.
Yeah, we need one that's, that's gonna stay.
There's no further questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Okay. Get a motion.
Question by Steve, second by Josh, all in favor?
We'll get with them and get it started as soon as possible. Uh, next item. Item I, sorry, we just almost got the entire outfit. This is approval to enter into contract with Northwest Arkansas Hospitals. That's the actual title of the entity. It's Northwest Health Systems for an athletic trainer. For to add that position to our current staff, so. I brought this to you termed that way because we are still trying to process through, do we need to use this as a purchase service, third-party entity as it has been even and just incorporate a higher cost, uh, which is what would have to happen, or do we take it on as an employee of ourselves within the district? And, you know, we just didn't have enough time. We didn't feel like, and I'm pointing over to Coach Preston as well. He's been involved in these discussions. To be able to bring to you a recommendation one way or the other right now, so by doing it this way, we kind of let ourselves, the options go, okay, well, we're going to enter into a contract with Northwest Health, or we're going to bring to you the name next month, uh, as an employee of our district, uh, to be added onto our contract salary.
I mean, at this point now, what is the benefit to entering into a contract with them?
That it's, that it's paid through them. It's not an employee. We don't pay the benefits, the high, higher cost benefits.
That was gonna be my next question.
It's not, it's, it's not all economical, but that's a big part of it.
So we would just cover a hundred percent of the salary, but as far as the, much of the overhead of that employee would still be covered by Northwest Health.
And I've put, you know, put feelers out because this not just affected us, it affected, it affected a period of other school districts. And I've heard back from one, they're doing purchase service. We don't know exactly in the other two or three that we have, what they're doing just yet, so. That's kind of what I'm trying to do some digging, you know, honestly. An athletic trainer is kind of a different position. So what does that look like within your district? How do you pay that? You know, I, I just didn't have enough time to gather all that information just yet, so.
And is one enough? It's like, how many is at work with St. Paul?
I mean, honestly, I mean, sometimes we've got football, basketball down there, volleyball over here, everything going at once.
There's, I mean, it's, it's stretched thin, but I don't know that you can find two, to be honest.
At this point in time, that would probably be, I would think, difficult to find two this time of the year. Most of them would already be contracted in some, in one place or another.
First, how's that work? Do they come down at certain days or?
She, uh, came down as needed and whenever we called, they were there pretty quick. And, uh, sometimes we would bring, uh, just an example, somebody with a nagging hamstring, bring them up to her and she would work on them and, um, let us know what needed to be done and uh, we tried to get through her first before we let the parents know what needed to be done. We always listened to her. Uh, it worked. Um, I don't think we did it on there full-time. We didn't have that many injuries, you know, with just track and, and basketball, uh, as our two primary sports. Um, we didn't see a lot of injuries. And like I said, anytime we called, Coach McCullough made sure that, uh, or Coach Tice made sure that, you know, somebody was there and, and was available for us, so yeah.
I mean, I, I don't want to speak out of turn. I mean, if there was the option at some point to have another one, I mean, in terms of the student's safety, I don't think you could have enough. I mean, you can't put a price on that, so to speak. But, um, I think the timing of it right now would probably be difficult to try to. When, when this all fell apart, I, inside, I kind of hit panic mode. I'm like, we gotta work this out. I mean, this is something we need. And so getting, securing that one was a big deal. And so, but I think that would be something, I wouldn't mind looking at the benefits of that coming up, just to help, since we do have the two different campuses of different towns.
I am going to say to the seniors now, I went to our activity meetings back in April, and that was one of the things that AAA brought up was the shortage of athletic trainers statewide. And, and I think, uh, Joey even said, if you were lucky enough to have one in your district, you're doing pretty good. And he was referring to the larger schools.
And, and I don't know if he's still willing to commit to this, but we normally have Dr. Embry there for a lot of it. So he's there on the sidelines. Because that's our most, you know, contact board, but we do have them there voluntarily to assist to.
And just some of the cave panels and here it says.
Sure.
Although I said it's the most contact, always basketball.
Actually, he's contacting them as well.
Do, uh, do they still teach coaches? We in college, some of the, some of the. All that stuff.
Sure, coaches do still go through ath-, uh, uh, first aid classes and things like that. Right, yes.
I mean, cause we had a guy when I was in school here, that, he was, he was a high school guy and he did all the typing for the junior high and the high school team. And if you had gold medals, he put you in the world tour we had down there, which was an old metal counter off and, uh, stuff like that. But he, I mean, that's what was his job. He was considered a trainer. And I didn't know, you know, if, if we've got coaches' positions open, if we, if we could get somebody qualified and hired and one of the coaches' positions would then justify that, you know what I mean? Cause we've got a couple of positions, there's partial coach open, right?
The problem with it is you're asking people who had to do a lot of schooling and training and they're, think of the hours. It's the weekends, nights, you're there before the coaches, you're there after the coaches, and I can see why it's hard to get people to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't mean to put one of them as a full-time, but get one that can do it, like if she had to run.
Well, what we're saying is they're, they're just, it's a right.
In general, that's what, that's what I was asking.
They're just not around. I mean, it's hard to do. So do we, what, what are we wanting to know? That if you can find one, that you're, that we are.
No, when you're, this just allows us, allows me to go ahead and enter into the contract in between times of school board meetings. If, if I deem, and if we deem, Coach Preston and myself deem that it's the best way to do it. And then if not, if we said, well, we're gonna take that person on as our own faculty member or our own staff member, then that would come to you as one as a high and a husband.
And is, is there a big cost difference in them being on staff as opposed to being contract?
Yes, there, there potentially would be. And, and honestly, there's not, you know, we have to look at are they certified, are they classified? Where would they be on a salary schedule? What, what would they be? Cause we don't know. There, there's not a lane for them in our, in our thinking right now. That's part of that process. I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Okay, federal assurances, approval of federal assurances. This is item J. This is an annual, uh, thing as well, annual, uh, compliance issue or item. This basically is us telling the federal government that the money that we receive from them, we are going to expend as they say that we can. Uh, we did it, uh, last month or the month before for special education. We, you know, we did this, we do this every year for the funds that we receive from the federal program.
Bobby, again, one second. Second, Mike, all in favor?
Okay. Last of our new business items. I know. I know. So this is the approval at the end of, excuse me, approval to transfer funds in excess of one million four hundred thousand dollars from the operating fund to the building fund when appropriate. So. I put in this, the, uh, the financial sheet is again for you to reference back to. We are showing that we will have in these restricted funds, basically one point seven million dollars. That is not our imbalance. Our imbalance is going to be predicted to be right at one point nine million dollars. Um, and that's what we go off of. That's what's reported to the state. That's what we'll build our budget off of, all of that. So what we are asking is of that one point nine that we feel like it's going to end up at. For us to be able to, at the end of period thirteen or right before the end of the period thirteen, to keep in our operating fund, we feel comfortable with an operating balance of one point four million dollars. That's kind of where it had been, uh, in previous years. Uh, it, it fluctuated between, you know, one point two to nine hundred thousand to, to those, you know, had been as high as one point nine several years ago. But one point four just kind of gives you a, a breathing room, but it also gives you a good balance to, to have a hold on. So whatever is in excess of that, after we've done all of our, all of our reconciliation, we would, we need the approval from you now to go ahead and transfer over to our building fund at that time. Do it now so that, you know, you're not looking at trying to wait till August fourteenth to do it. At that point, it's almost too late. So.
Why is it too late?
It has to be done by July, the, the last day of July, because period thirteen closes out. You have to have all your adjustments made at that point.
And what happens if you don't do that? They take the money back or?
Oh, no.
They don't take the money back, but.
If you can't, can't.
You can't close out your year, yeah. And they're not gonna allow, you know, it, it's just gotta be done the last day of July, so it's, it's every district.
Okay.
But it's kind of like a city's account or future projects.
Sort of, yeah. It's, you know, this is not uncommon for districts that are, that have, have done fairly well with, with their revenue and their expenditure, you know, when they have that, that revenue, that overage of revenue that they, not overage of revenue, but they, they manage their money with less of them. It's no other way to put it. So you move that money to your building fund and start building that up for projects that you, or future projects that you can have for insurance.
And what happens if we need that money? Can we not spend it on building fund? Can it come back out and go back into?
Yeah, you try not to, but you can, you know, when you're coding of things, you can spend building fund if you have to. That's why we're not transferring all of it. We want to keep that, that one point four. We feel like that gives us a pretty good account to, to be able to do things that we want to do in the next fiscal year with the revenue that we know we're gonna get, starting in, we won't get much revenue starting in, uh, July because there's no tax revenue basically, but we're starting at that point in July. This will give us enough of a, of a balance to be able to operate.
And where can you save the classified people as far as giving them like?
This will, this should allow us to do all sorts of things in next fiscal year in that, in that.
And when you say fiscal year after this month, or are we having to wait all the way till next July?
No, I mean, you're, we, we would have the opportunity to do. No, I mean, you're, we would have the opportunity to do last...
So, we're in July 1st, this is the start of this fiscal year, right? So, we're talking this fiscal year or all this fiscal year? Okay.
Can you motion to approve? Second, on my favor.
Okay. Transfer request. We have one transfer request. This was a new home school that never, not attended council or school district.
Can you motion to approve? First, my job, second, Monday, on my favor.
Protecting it somehow. And then personnel.
Can you get a motion to approve?
Ivan, I'd like to, is going to executive session first. Have a discussion about that employee.
Returning from executive session, no actions taken. We're going to go ahead and go on with personnel. Do I have a motion to approve personnel? Resignation from Steve, second from Josh. All in favor or opposed? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed to one of the people on the list.
I'm opposed to one on the list. Okay. Resignations, Zach Wiggins, HHS teacher and coach. Patricia Parker, HHS counselor. Savannah Lyndon, HHS agri teacher. All of these are June 30th, sorry. Audrey Hamilton, HHS science. Jennifer Hoskin, HMS teacher and coach. Brittany Robinson, Watson primary teacher. Drew Robinson, HHS teacher and coach. Randy Oxford, HMS principal. Classified resignations. Neil Slinger, maintenance. John David Watkins, maintenance. And Tim Caswell, transportation. All those June 30th. Hires. Certified Justin Holloman, HHS agri. Two forty day contract. Carrie Gillespie.
Gillespie.
Gillespie, sorry. Watson primary teacher. July one. Courtney Gonzalez, Watson primary pre-K teacher. July one. Amanda Zuber, HIS teacher. July one. Nathan Willem, HHS science. July one. James McVay, HHS teacher. July one. Joshua Hall, HHS teacher. July one. Kavin Flessner, HHS coach and teacher. July one. Sean Cash, HMS coach, teacher. July one. Chris Johnson, HMS principal. Two forty day contract. We'll actually start his on July 17th, 2023. Classified Megan Donahue, Donahoe. HIS paraprofessional. July one. Amanda Edens, Watson primary special ed paraprof. July one. Weldon Orand, maintenance. July one. Jeff Sharp, HIS custodian. Two forty day contract. Randy Jurgelang, HHS custodian. Two forty day contract. Susan Bailey, Watson primary custodian. Two forty day contract. Transfers certified. Tim Brown, HHS math. To HHS counselor. Two ten day contract. Nick Coulter, HMS science teacher. To HMS health teacher. July one. His coaching duties still apply. Cynthia Whitmore, HHS special education. To HIS special ed. July one. Jana Beaver, HMS teacher. To HMS family and consumer science. Career development. July one. Marty Carroll, head soccer coach. To assistant coach. Sport to be determined. Deion Duncan, head softball coach. To head track coach. July one. Jessica Helms, assistant softball. To head softball. July one. Emily Milton. We're going to add head soccer coach to her. Beginning July one. Classified transfers. Aaron Baker, HIS custodian. To maintenance. Two forty day contract. Amy Clampett, HMS nutrition. To HMS nutrition manager. One eighty day contract. And Pearl Vasquez, Watson primary custodian. To HIS custodian. One day, one hundred and eighty day contract. One day contract, not a one day. Thank you all. Going on?
All right. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss before?
I just want to say thank you to the teachers like Zach Wiggins. Put in a lot of years here and worked with him. Appreciate that, what he did. And I don't necessarily know everybody else that worked with him. But I really appreciate all the years he put in here for us.
Can I classify the staff as well, Wiggins?
Oh, yeah. Neil was an unbelievable maintenance person.
I'd say thank you to the custodians on the ground. They were saying, "Oh, it looks a lot better." And thank you for the restroom.
We got the restroom. Yes.
Almost complete.
It's almost there.
What do you want to do?
We've got to have a go.
Yes, sir.
That question was like, "What do you see?"
It's a long answer.
A better place.
Yeah.
A good place for a go.
There's no windows.
It's my understanding it's a one restroom. One stool.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Just before we get, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just to put it on your radar, I usually email it to you. But we may need to have another board meeting in between now and August for hires. It's just kind of a courtesy that school districts do for each other around this time. If you just wanted to put that on your agenda. I don't have a date. I don't know.
Next week, I'm not here.
I know. I wanted you to be able to tell him that.
No meeting.
I feel like a cop killer. That's all right.
If that's it, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm with you.
And I got a second down there. All in favor?
Thank you much.